I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Justin Malinsky.
Justin Tremblay.
Here.
Justin Garrett.
Here.
Andrew Petrich.
Here. It's hard to break.
I know.
It's the M's too. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Make motion?
I'll check in.
Okay, thank you. Any corrections, additions, changes? No?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Calvin, welcome. Would you like to address the board? And congratulations on being sworn in as our Clinton County Legislature.
Thank you. I just wanted to show up and I can't make a lot of meetings because if I'm here, I'm not recording something. And right now, I'm missing my granddaughter's basketball game.
Thank you for giving us a little bit of time. We appreciate it.
But, you know, anything I can do to help, I don't expect to count your government's the end of all your problems. You know, whatever I can do to help. I'm on the Economic Development Committee, the Finance Committee, the Human Services Committee, the Personnel Committee, and I'm Chairman of the Public Safety Committee. But there's five other committees, so it sounds like a lot. There's a whole lot of committees and a whole lot of departments at the county level.
Can you read those one more time?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Economic Development.
Yeah, Calvin.
All right, Finance. I hesitate to say that one because... Human Services.
Calvin.
Personnel. And Chairman of the Public Safety Committee.
That's great. That's going to keep you pretty busy.
Yes, and, you know, obviously, there's, like I said, there's ten, five other committees besides that. So there's a lot of other committees that may not be on, but I could help you with those departments too. So it'll be bashful. You know, like I said, I won't be able to attend a heck of a lot of meetings, but, you know, I will be able to see them. Thanks to Mary pushing that button up there.
That's great.
But feel free to keep me alert to whatever's going on.
Oh, we'll keep in touch.
Yeah.
Yeah, and thank you for extending that out to us.
Yeah. And thanks for your service. It's a big commitment.
Yeah, it is.
We appreciate it.
It's, you know, every one of those committees is a trip to Plattsburgh for another meeting, so...
Yeah. Well, great. Well, thank you.
Full-time, part-time job.
Yeah, that's very true, I'm sure.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to find out which one of these two jobs takes up more time in your day.
And I do have a fan watch.
I know, yeah. Exactly.
So, once you've got any questions, if...
No.
No, not yet.
Congratulations as well. Congratulations.
Yeah. That's excellent.
Probably sneak out for a little while, but...
That's fine. Stay as long as you, as long as you can.
Like I said, I'll be watching Mary's video here, so...
That's right. And I think we have an award for Tom.
And Mary.
And Mary.
Okay.
Wow.
Which one are you, Tom?
Ryan.
You're right across the street?
Yes.
Okay. So, congratulations. You are the winner of the overall contest. So what was really nice about your home both day and night, and that your new, right here across the street, gave you that award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate the effort. You know, the garage was covered. I don't know if everybody went around and looked, but the whole house was, was covered socially.
The pusher's still working.
The what?
The pusher.
What's a pusher?
Mary.
Mary.
Nobody was either.
I did.
So you can go see movies.
Wonderful, right?
Yes, really.
That's great.
Thank you.
Save the letter, we'll put it with there.
All right, so it's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It was nice. I enjoyed looking at it.
Thanks so much, Tom.
Thank you.
It's so nice to have you here in the village, too.
Working.
So we had new judges this year, so it was kind of exciting to bring in a couple new people. We also had the, the brightest award was atop of Prospect Street. And that was to... Ben and Jennifer Huff. So that was greatly appreciated by many people. Again, Prospect Street wins hands down for the greatest number of participants. Matter of fact, I think there's only like two that didn't this year. It was really even more were on it. Call out again to the patries. You know, it was a beautiful homemade stuff. It was incredible. They do not want to be recognized, so that's why they were not chosen. Because they were chosen by the new judges right away. Well, that's one. They don't want to be recognized, so we'll pull them off. And then for, we had a new category for trying to pull in our new residents to the area. So the new house up on Oak Street, first time being decorated, was Brandon McCoslin and... Brand McCoslin, is that correct?
Brandon McCoslin.
Okay. And James Minard on Oak Street. It was really cool. They had this frosty face on the garage. Very unique. So it was really great to see. There weren't as many people decorated within the village this year, though, however. It was, it was down greatly, and I was sad to see the folks outside of our village. Their home was up for sale. It wasn't decorated.
Yeah, they moved.
It was so sad because they were the best. But anyway, it's always a pleasure to go around and see the participation. Went out three separate nights because the first time, there were very few lights on within that week. So we had to keep going out. But that's why we got different people each time.
Yeah.
So it was good. So anyway, thank you to all who participated again. Yes?
I'm supposed to ask, on behalf of the pusher, do something similar for Valentine's Day?
No.
Good.
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean you're out to look though.
I mean, we could throw all the holidays in and maybe one winner for the pod because people are really starting to get into the Halloween one, too. It's just great participation. At Valentine's Day, I've really never noticed too much, but...
Perfect.
Tell her yes. There'll be a contest. So...
We love to look at your house.
Yes, we do. It is, it's great. It's good to see life there.
So do we. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks, everybody's been very welcoming to us.
Wonderful.
Everybody has been.
It's a great little village.
And Amy, thank you for organizing that.
No problem.
And Brandon McCoslin did say he was sorry that they would not be able to come tonight. All right. So that's it for the question period for members of the community. Did we schedule that for a specific time, the public hearing? No, we didn't.
I think I said six, but six thirty.
Oh, okay.
Beautiful.
All right.
Make a motion to leave the general meeting?
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
And could I have a motion to open?
Why are you leaving the general meeting?
Because I'm going to...
We have to close it.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I was thinking something else.
May I have a motion to...
You're tired.
She was only speaking for herself.
I make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we are in a public hearing for local law number one, 2020. This is the Streets and Sidewalks Notification of Defect. Tom, do you have any? I mean, you're here and you're part of the public. Do you have any comments?
Keep up the good work.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now I need a motion to open a public hearing for local law two, 2020, supplementary regulations on signs.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're now in the public hearing for local law number two, 2020, regarding signs. Any comments from the public? All right.
So we give a brief...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Should we do a brief?
Probably even, we probably should have did with the other one, too. Kind of what it was, just bringing it up to standard.
I discussed this earlier and decided not to.
Okay.
But I am happy to, I've got it right here. I'm happy to summarize it. I really did not want to read the entire thing.
No.
And I definitely don't want to misstate it in a summary, but I can do that here. These notices were available to the public here, and it was also in the newspaper. So... We're currently on the sign one. This is chapter 119. It's part of zoning. This is a local law to amend and supplement Article 7 supplementary regulations of chapter 119, zoning of the code of the Village of Champlain. And this primarily deals with signs. Section A talks about signs that are prohibited in all zones. Section B talks about regulations for commercial and industrial zone signs. Section C talks about regulations for residential zones. Section D is sign area. Section E is sign height. And section F are temporary signs. And the history of needing this, just to give a little bit of background, is we had this information, particularly residential signs. But inadvertently, when we had our zoning changes a year and a half or two years ago, that one section got left out. So we need to put it back in because we have had some interest in residential signs. And then we had nothing to fall back on. So that's the history of the background.
Enough, that's the gist of it.
All right. So a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second? Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'd like a motion to go back into the regular meeting.
So moved.
And a second? There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the report from the codes enforcement officer.
You have my report. December was a slow month, a lot of vacations, zoning board meeting, other than that, hardly nothing.
Mike, Taitron and I had a, had a discussion today about a couple of issues. But one thing that he brought up that I might as well mention right now, because he's right here, is the difficulty in using one computer between the two of us. In the past, Greg and Mike shared a desk. And Greg often was in the main office, so Mike had access to a phone and a desk and a computer. And I totally taken over that corner and moved him and a desk to the other side. But he, it's hard for him to have a computer. Because if I'm on it, it's awkward. He doesn't want to tell me to get off it, even though I said, "Do you need it?" But you know how that goes. So I think we should think about a computer station for him.
By the time I move everything from my desk over there to do what I have to do, if I get called out, I got to put everything away. I don't want to leave a mess in case the mayor comes back in. When Greg was there, him and I were of the same mindset. The desk was messy, it was all right. But hers is immaculate.
Well, I wouldn't say immaculate, but it tended to be tight.
It's just too hard, going back and forth. All my information's on my desk. I gotta go get my books, bring them over there, bring them back. I mean, a computer's what, three, four hundred bucks? The printer's right there, so that was one of the things.
I think it's, I don't... Yeah, I think it's something that's important, and it does make it difficult for him to write letters or to research something.
I mean, sometimes I gotta come in, I just need the computer for five minutes to look something up. But if the mayor's on the computer, I'm not going to tell her to get off the computer because I'm there. It's just not going to happen.
Well, I mean, you certainly can, but it's still, it's still difficult. Just, yeah. So I just wanted to bring that up now, and I think we should think about, or I think we should get a computer for him.
The other thing that I talked with the mayor about, in the past, in the past quite a few years, actually, when I started working here, I started coming to the village board meetings. The water project was in its infancy with shared services and so on, so forth. I was involved with it, and Mayor Greg was involved in it at the time. So I always came to the village board meetings because I had an interest in the water project. The water project is done now. I don't get paid to come to these meetings. These are all after-hours for me to come. I'm more than happy to give you a report, but I don't see the need of why I need to be here every meeting. If there's a specific thing that comes up where you need me here, you want me here, I have no problem of coming. But I just don't see the need to come every, every month. I just wanted to inform the board. I went over this afternoon with Sarah, how the, there's not really a contract per se that's structured. It's just, when are you going to the village? How many hours are you going to be there? So as it works out, it's six hours a week. So... I just wanted you to know. If you have any comments, concerns?
Mike and I did discuss this this afternoon, but I did want to get the input from the other board members. And he definitely would have to submit a report every month.
That's not an issue. I don't have a problem doing that.
Can they submit the report early enough so we can review it in plenty of time in case we need, we want you here to discuss?
Can't give it to you a week ahead of time. That works, yeah.
Be fine.
Because there definitely are times where we do have questions.
Yeah, no, like I say, you know, if you, if you need me here, I don't have a problem coming. I mean, I do the zoning board, the planning board when they come. I'll continue doing that. That's not an issue.
Yeah, if we could have it a week in advance so we can review, and after we feel we'd like you there, then we can let you know. I can, I can respect that. I think it's important that you be here, but I understand.
Well, the thing is, is I'm not required to go to any other. I don't go to the town board meetings unless they really want me or I want to go. I don't go to Shazie. I didn't go, I did go to Rouse's Point off and on, but it was the same scenario. So it's kind of unique here.
Well, it's because it's always been what was our understanding, you just, you know, you would attend the meeting. So if there were any questions to ask or things that needed to be done more timely to just address it right here with you and get answers, you know, because we do just meet the monthly, so...
Any other comments on that? All right. I think that's fine, Mike. If you can get that report early to us.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
People have questions, then we'll make sure that you come just to answer those questions. I don't see why you need to sit through an hour and a half meeting.
If we have concerns ahead, excuse me, if we have concerns ahead, we could email you.
Yeah, I mean, you can get ahold of me anytime. Email me, call me, whatever. It's not a problem.
Yeah. Because I really do appreciate your knowledge. I mean, it's, it's helpful in terms of zoning.
I'm practicing, I'm tired.
You're easing into it.
Unless it out goes. Doesn't seem to work for a lot of people.
All right, thank you. Anything else for Mike?
No, thanks, buddy.
All right, here's my report. Happy New Year, everyone. As we look forward to this new year, let's take a minute to reflect on the past year of 2019. We faced several challenges in the Village of Champlain, including water main breaks, vandalism, and the forever dilapidated buildings. However, many projects were accomplished. Streets were paved, upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. The IMA regarding the water project was signed with the town. Recreational and cultural events took place, and our hometown hero banners have been ordered. Despite the crazy weather during the annual tree lighting, and it certainly was crazy, we did have a nice group gather at the Champlain Meeting House to welcome Santa, to sing some carols and enjoy hot chocolate. Thanks to Dunkin' Donuts for the cocoa and the munchkins. Thanks to Robbie Roberts for stopping by with his beautifully decorated truck. Thanks to Santa Claus for his time and gifts. To Border View for the offer of a tree. To Buffy Little for leading the singing. And the Champlain Fire District for bringing Santa. Also, thanks to Nikki Malinsky for organizing the holiday crafts. And Kim and Tom Tremblay for running the candy cane hunt. You did a great job. Yes, they did. They did a wonderful job. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the DPW crew for all their work decorating the village, and Mary and Juanita for their role in making the office festive, and their dedication in organizing the holiday gathering. Thank you. A primary concern in the winter is safe streets and sidewalks. We do our best to keep these as clean as possible, given the harsh weather conditions we often have. Remember that vehicles cannot be parked on village streets between 2:00 and 6:00 a.m. If you have specific concerns, call the office to voice them. I encourage everyone to check on friends and neighbors this winter. Aging adults especially can benefit from having a supportive, caring community around them. Although today's society emphasizes privacy, it can be life-saving to have a neighbor you can count on. If you notice mail or newspapers piling up, stop by to see if help is needed. Thank you and Happy New Year. Report from the trustees. Nikki, you want to start?
Like Janet said, our Christmas activities went well. We had about fifteen, twenty kids get to attend the crafts, the candy cane hunt. And thank you, Tom and Kim, for going out there and enjoying it with us.
It was the next day.
It was a beautiful day. It was perfect timing. We have our next cooking class coming up on February 2nd at 2:00 at the Meeting House. We'll be making pinwheels, which are tortilla wraps with little veggie, veggies and cream cheese. There is an event on Facebook, and if anyone needs to contact me, by email, nikki-malinsky@yahoo.com or through Facebook, I can answer any questions. Possibly future dates would be April, July, October time. I am also working on some activities during February break along with the Champlain Library. We hosted a few days last year, which included using the ice rink. So hopefully, we could that up soon. And also with the library for planning a paint and sip on February 8th as a fundraiser. So anyone's invited for that. And an idea that I would like to go with is creating a teen book club, also along with the library, to meet every six weeks about and kind of get our teens into something. So we'll see what we can do with that. It's a really good idea.
Tom?
Okay. So Happy New Year to all as well. Talk about the village sign for starters, the one that goes over our door here. It's been vacant for a long time. I just received it yesterday. It's just come back. It is completed, but the vinyl was not installed. Scott wished not to do that. And when I looked at the sign, I decided I wouldn't do it because if they had painted it, I didn't want to put it on a painted surface. It wasn't smooth enough. So I removed the disc at the top where the, our painting would go, the vinyl painting, and brought it to Jess, and she has it. We should get it back, hopefully, within a week. She's going to prepare the surface properly and adhere it so it doesn't come off in the weather. Because that's what I was afraid of. I did it, I didn't want to put it in somebody. I thought it should be professionally done. So it'll be here soon. I'll have to get the guys to install it. Then this is actually a report from Kim in regards to the kayak launch. She completed the AARP challenge update for December. It was submitted. There were issues with the website, which delayed her submission. She had a lot of, a lot of trouble with, there's an update button that's supposed to be in that, in there, and it wasn't there. And it took a few weeks to get that fixed.
It's so frustrating.
It was very frustrating for her. So anyways, they have been updated. They have received it and replied. The doc has been ordered. I told them no sooner than April for, for delivery. They have no place to store. And he was, he's in the same position. He was glad to hear that. So he'll stay in, in New Hampshire until then. The, I requested a quote for the rail or the bumper, as we talked about. We're trying to, so you understand this, Calvin, we're trying to make this handicap accessible. So we wanted to make sure that it was compliant for wheelchairs. They haven't got that quote back yet. I've emailed them. The company hasn't. Apparently, this is not standard for them, but they are putting together a quote to make one. Yeah, it was surprising.
It's surprising.
Yeah, because it was standard with some of the other places I've worked with, so... So that's where I have that. Kim and I met with Modern Mechanical today to find out, you know, where he was at. We discussed some details. He's been working on a plan, a drawing, and he should have it completed to provide us in the next couple of weeks. And there was questions. I'm glad I stopped him because he had, he had a lot of questions regarding what was needed. For example, roller underneath it. So we got on the website, played around.
Oh, good.
And he's, he's ready to keep moving with it. So that's it for the, for the kayak launch. And then I would like to add that, as Tom mentioned earlier, we have a mix of Columbus Free Throw scheduled for the 25th of January. Registration's at 12:30, and competition will begin at 1:30. This is for nine to 15-year-olds. So, any grandkids, any children? It's free, and it's a lot of fun.
I don't know if she could reach that.
I know.
She's nine? James is tall, she's nine.
Yeah, James is, is tall. But she's nine?
She's nine.
Perfect. All the information's been sent out to the schools. It's been sent out. Did you receive any now?
I did, yep.
Okay.
Multiple, so yes. It's gone out.
Many times, if you're sports.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm hoping for, we had a nice turnout last year, so I hope for that again. It's just a fun day for kids.
Yeah, that's it is.
Is it at Northeastern or is it?
At the middle school gym. NCCS Middle School Gym.
Is it Mary's available now?
Yeah, I know. Ever since the fire, that's where we've been. And we hold the council level, and then immediately following, we do the district level. So both, both are done in one afternoon. And from there, the winners can then go to Canton and compete.
That's great.
And so on.
A good time, too.
Yeah. And we had one that went to, to...
Syracuse, or...
He went to Syracuse, and from Syracuse, he went to West Point last year.
Oh, my goodness. A local kid?
Yeah.
Oh, nice. Oh, that's great.
It's a cup ball.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he won in Syracuse, moved on to West Point, and he, he lost there by like one basket.
Oh, for him?
14 or 15.
Yeah. Wow, that's exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, he may have been fifteen.
That's great.
I think he's a sophomore now.
Yeah, you should know that.
Alex Kupel pulls the seat.
Yes, that's right.
You can read his name in the paper.
That one's probably filmed in a time or two. And he's a good ball player, yeah.
Anything else, Tom?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Amy?
So the Stewart Holiday Match Grant is coming due on the thirty-first of this month. So looking for ideas of what you want to write it for. It's for children eighteen and under, so it's a community item. Obviously, every year we focus on something within the playground that they have generously contributed to. So I'm looking for ideas to write the grant. Anywhere between five hundred and a thousand dollars is usually what I ask for. Every year I kinda up it a little bit and see if they go for it, and they've been going for it, so you know. Can't hurt to ask.
That's right.
So I know you mentioned some playground equipment. Is there a particular piece of playground equipment y'all would like to see? Thoughts?
I'd have to look at a website and see. We did remove that, that merry-go-round thing, so there is a space there.
Satisfaction with that.
Yeah, but that was not safe.
No.
It was fun, though.
Yeah, it was fun until the two-year-old.
Think about the barrels. Did any of you have the barrels that you had on the playground when you were a kid? That you ran inside the barrel? And sometimes when you got going really fast, the kids that couldn't keep up, they'd be on the top and then slam down. It was the best. How do we also run that?
I think I missed that one.
It was a huge barrel and you'd just get running. You had a ton of kids in it and there's always some.
Maybe that was only in Victor.
Behind them, what can I say, you know? Anyway, so if you take a look, I'll throw some ideas out there based on those price ranges because equipment's staggeringly expensive.
Yes, it is.
You know, that's why we benefit with the donations so tremendously. So I can take a look at that. I also found a garden grant I would like to write, where it focuses on gardening for children, so maybe to incorporate with the things you do at the home. So you either get five hundred or you get a thousand. It's a nationwide one, but I think it'd be perfect. You know, we have to provide a garden, a detail of the space. And it seems that it's more favorable when the kids are growing the food to donate it to the community. So if we were growing food for JCEO as a project, as well as them taking it home and, and seeing the benefits of, of it. I, I really liked this grant. It just, it's, the, the kids who are participating in it seemed very hooked on gardening now, which is really kind of cool to see. I know my granddaughter loves it. Every year, gotta have the rain boots to go out and help do the garden and watch the progress. So it's, it's kinda fun to do. So I don't know, you know, working around some incorporation, you know, with doing a class down there. Can we expand the garden space that we have so we have a, a certain amount that's designated just for children? These are all kinds of questions that they're asking. And the other piece that I would need is a breakdown of how many kids you think would participate between the age of zero and four, five and ten, eleven and thirteen, and fourteen and eighteen? It's a requirement on the grant.
We can do that.
Sounds like Paul's.
Yeah, so it just needs to go there. So I have till February fourteenth on that one, so I got a lot of time.
Plenty of time. We'll let you know by the twelfth, our ideas.
This one's a little longer, so the eleventh would be better.
Okay, okay. Maybe we could tie in one of the cooking classes, too.
Yeah.
And we did, we have room in the garden. We have room in the garden usually to designate a children's section, which we did probably three years.
Well, part of this is adding to something or new.
Okay, well, we can add two.
Right, so if we designate, we could save part of the, you know, the lots that we haven't used and add a little bit to that. And it, it's specifically for that. So if we did something around each age group of something specific, you know, the younger kids are growing pumpkins. That's all they're gonna really care about, right? We don't really need weedos, just, I don't know, water, water, water. So I'd be happy to help with that. But I will write that. And are there other grants you want me looking for? Because this is the month to really be identifying grants, because they come and go real quick.
Not that I know of right now.
I am trying to find one for the basketball court, because I think that is gonna be the best thing to get moved. But we're talking between eight, twelve thousand for a simple, small-size half-court to, to get it there. But if we do it right, it's gonna be there forever and, you know.
Not the tarmac, right?
The drainable, that's the drainable.
Well, you have a drain. No, that's what tarmac is, between eight and twelve. For a small size.
We can't do, we can't do the tarmac.
And what we have, though.
We can't do tarmac anymore?
Can't put any more tarmac that's down there.
No, it's gotta be that permeable.
Forget it. It's quadruple the price.
That the water can basically go through it.
It's a type of basketball, I believe, that's permeable, right?
Right. You don't put the extra top on, the water will go through it eventually.
Seal it.
Seal the bunker. Isn't that ridiculous? The water flows over it. I mean, we're just kinda so ridiculous. I'm sorry, so I had to say it.
It's, it's okay.
That's the theme of Buy Out Properties.
But that's the problem, right? And they do, we check with us every year.
We're not gonna get anything done down there. I know.
So we'll have to look into how we can fund one of those permeable ones.
Okay.
Okay, at a half-court.
We'll just have to fix what's there.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Better than nothing.
Right.
Yeah. And, and do we have, you know, do you want me looking for something that's more, you know, I've seen a lot of ice rinks up in the communities this year. Is there something that we can get that's going to be easier and not as cumbersome? I saw, you know, three hundred dollars just for plastic. We gotta have something that's reusable and...
Well, that plastic was used for several years.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, we got, we got good use out of that plastic. It was used for several years.
But it seems like the basketball is the more, is more of the sport that they're asking for for summer.
Yes.
Yeah, for summer, definitely.
Yeah, that's, well, we have a lot of people asking for the ice rinks, just as the consistency in it has been minimal.
Well, it's the weather.
Yeah, why not?
I mean, look ahead, look at the next week. They can't put ice down. It's up and down and...
It'll be rough.
It was heavy.
There's some nice rinks in Placerville right now.
And it wasn't very nice.
And it wasn't very, yeah.
Feel a little bad, Barking.
Anything else, Amy?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. They have their revenue report treasurer, see if we got some transfers.
Yep, well, everyone has their expense revenue report for December. There's just a couple of questions as to where we are at this point regarding more wages.
Yeah, I know. I, I circled all this stuff.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, shoot.
Well, yeah, well, the streets is going to be, we have now into snow. So wages are being put into snow, but it's still, yeah.
More tight.
That one's tight. And so is the water. That's due to the water main breaks. Every time they get a water main break, all their wages go, boom, there goes our budget. Gina and I were discussing today, when we do our budget, which is coming very soon, that we need to start working on that, as to how to allocate our funding, our wages. Should we be putting more into water and less into sewer?
Maybe.
You know, we always do that fifty, twenty, thirty, which is, which is, seems to be the break. It seems to work in the past. Maybe now we need to do a different formula doing, doing our wages.
Twenty for sewer?
It's, uh, no, well...
No, you're suggesting.
No, no. Right now it's fifty streets, twenty for water, and thirty for sewer.
Oh, really?
That's, yeah, that's the way, that's the way we do it when we figure our wages.
And that was probably because of the...
The majority of it. So maybe we need to do a restructure of, of, look at everybody's like, the two salary people, well, fifty, twenty, thirty, that's pretty standard. Mary's is pretty standard, but as far as the other four guys, Woody is wastewater, which we, the majority of his wages are there. But the other three, I guess we need to figure out how we should structure their wages. Should we put, put more in? I guess that's to be discussed.
Well, we need to.
I would say so, because historically, this is where the...
Yeah, yeah, that's, it seems wages, yeah. Anyway, so that's where that is at this point, but otherwise it's pretty good. The overall budget spending is, is good.
So I, I did have several questions. So, and a lot were around the employment component. So is the state retirement a one or twice a year pay?
State retirement and workers' comp will pay once a year.
Okay, all right, so that's done and over. Okay. The others are close, but I mean, we're still under that piece. And are you concerned about the taxes? Well, because we seem to be very low so far of what's come in. Let me find out. Hold on, I'll go to that, sorry.
Our property, our, our property taxes?
And the, the boat launch, that was all with the kayak, right? The extra money that we're moving in?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yes, because we actually have to put that grant money into a revenue account. We don't, doesn't go into this account specifically. So it's money that we're spending that we did not budget for. So that's why I'm asking for that transfer from the fund balance into parks for, for those two components that we already purchased, which is the EZ Dock plus the kayak launch.
Okay. For the non-property tax items under revenues.
Oh, that's, that comes from the county.
Yeah, right. So our county reimbursement is like way down.
Well, we should be getting another check. We get a quarterly check.
Okay. So I just was curious if you're comfortable with where it's at right now? We're at a hundred and seven versus what we're projected, a hundred and ninety. And I didn't know how many more.
That's because, oh, no, we should be getting one more. We should be getting one more, so we're...
But is one more gonna hit it?
We have, what is it, like seventy thousand that we have left?
Eighty-one.
Yeah.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, eighty-three. So that's my question. I seemed a little nervous.
It's always come in like, you know.
Okay.
It's, it's...
I don't know if you had heard things or timber, but we've never been that far off at this stage. We're gonna...
I mean, they say the sales tax projections are ahead of schedule, but we also have to remember that now the county needs to pay that AIM funding that we get, that extra AIM funding that we get, that nine thousand, ninety-six hundred dollars that we get, now has to come from the county. It doesn't come from the state. The county needs to pay us that, which is gonna come off the sales tax. So we don't know how that's gonna turn out either, because it's coming down this year.
Yeah. This is the first year they've done that.
Yeah.
And the sixty-eight, eighty-four that came in under other cultural and recreation again?
That's the money that we got, the, the grant that we got for the kayak.
Okay, that's what I thought. Wanted to make sure. Okay. Those are my questions. Sorry.
No, no, it's good. I had very similar questions. Juanita can tell you today. Today we discussed things for about an hour. But I, yeah, I just think that maybe, that this year's been a little different because we have, everyone's here, we don't have someone out, and we have a new employee. So this is the first year that we've had.
You have to run a whole cycle in order to figure out how that's going to affect your budget.
Well, we knew what it was gonna be.
Right, so we probably are gonna make some adjustments. All right, any other, any other questions from anyone? Okay, so we have to do the transfer first.
We had a water and sewer bill. Our water was sixty thousand, nine, twenty-two, twenty-six. And sewer was sixty-seven thousand, four, fifty-two, thirteen. Okay, and I've asked that we do a transfer from the fund balance to A seventy-one, ten point four, which is parks to cover the cost of the EZ Dock and the kayak launch, in which we got a grant for, for five thousand, six hundred and, six hundred dollars and seventeen cents.
Make a motion to do that transfer?
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And we have additional invoices to be added to the warrant.
Yep, we have additional invoices to add to the warrant of nine thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents for a total warrant of twenty-nine thousand, two, fifty-two, oh, nine.
What's the uptake in zoning issues with having our lawyer look at?
That was a zoning issue that came up with the brand of zoning board, and we weren't sure if things had been done properly, so I asked our lawyer to weigh in on it, and he came to one of the zoning board meetings. It was, it was very helpful.
Make a motion to approve the warrant with the additions?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? We'll call.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Walensky?
Aye.
Playing with us. I was looking at email, going, hey, this is...
I know.
Well, I got her meme ready.
That's a first. That is a first in twenty years. You never know.
Just keeping you on your toes.
Right.
All right. Oh, Juanita, do you wanna mention the Constellation then right now, too?
Um, I got an email last week from Dando Murphy, who's the guy that I've worked with, with Constellation, which is our energy supplier. Not our, nicely because our carrier, but this is our energy supplier. And our rate for the last two years is point zero three six seven five per kilowatt. He advised me that this year it's gone down to point zero three four four two, which is two tenths of a cent less. And his projections are that we will save thirteen hundred dollars in one year on the lower rates. So we've discussed it. I had the, the contract to sign. We were gonna sign up for another two years. I've gotten several calls from different suppliers, and they cannot touch this rate.
So is the board comfortable with going with that two-year plan?
Yeah, we've been with them some.
Okay, great. Thanks for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Report from the superintendent. Mike did give us his report. As you can see, they've been very, very busy. I don't think I need to read the report to you. But they've been busy with streets and sidewalks, of course, all the Christmas stuff. Does have the plastic for the rink. We gotta wait for the weather. And he's got a lot of ongoing projects. If anyone has any specific questions, I'll try to answer if I can.
So I see he's still waiting for that cylinder.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
Didn't see that it should take that long, huh?
I know.
Well, wasn't the thing that they were waiting for the cost of shipping? Which we still do not know how much that, that would cost.
And when you have a week?
Well, yeah, possibly. But it is in the town. So it, it will be the town's responsibility unless they, unless they want us to, to work on it.
None of the charging stations down again, too?
One is not working and one is working.
That's been like that. Well, somebody did use it last crazy.
Oh, good, okay.
I, I can get on my computer onto that EV connect, and the one charging station that is using it, it's been used like for about four or five times. So there is one that is operating.
At least that's being used.
Yeah, and the guy, the technician, did send me an email, like between Christmas and New Year's, and said that they were still working on the issue. And that's the last I've heard.
We haven't given up on it. It's just not a priority right now.
Right.
His, his last bulletin, bottom paragraph?
Second to last.
With the asterisk. I agree, we do need a generator for that plant, and he's asking, are there any grants I could call?
So the best, the best grant for that is going to be USDA, which is the same one that I'm trying to get some money for, for the snowplow through. I think I'll call the woman in Canton and ask her, first ask her where the snowplow grant is right now, because it's been ongoing for about seven months. But also ask her about this generator through USDA, I think. Yeah, I think that they would fund something like that. That's my understanding. Mike, you've had a little experience with these grants with USDA, right?
Yeah, I mean, when we redid our lift station on the Dubois Road, they, they funded that through a grant almost entirely, and that was eighty-six thousand dollars. So I'm pretty sure the generator would follow that. That's for the wastewater plant, or the water plant, yeah.
Yeah, the water plant.
Critical service, yeah.
Yeah, right.
You're talking with Renee?
I'm gonna talk to Renee.
Yeah, yeah, she's the one that...
Yeah, she's great.
Yeah.
And she'll work with us.
She'll write the grant?
Well, she, she kind of holds my hand as we go through it. I'll write it, but she's very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Between us.
So that's what, that's what we'll try. It's really important.
I thought of it the other day when we were looking at this ice storm.
Oh, I know.
We're gonna shut that plant down. I thought of it the other day when we were looking at this ice storm, we're on the job, we're gonna shut that plant down.
I know.
Did we have any quotes on generators?
Oh, gosh, we did about three years ago, we were talking about it then, does anyone remember?
Not a lot. It was a lot of money, but I do not remember.
It was a lot of money.
Yeah, it was.
Found out.
Yeah, I I, I think I have that paperwork somewhere.
It was quite some money.
Any other questions or comments or anything you want me to share with Mike?
Well, on good reports.
Yeah, keep it up.
Yeah, yeah, keep up the good work as well. And and get healthy. Uh, he also left a couple of um, sheets about the digital radar um, signs that we, that we wanna get. I wish he were here to explain these, because he can tell, he can explain this a lot better than I can. Um, but one's a fifteen inch, and one's a, one's a fifteen, I thought he said one was a twelve. Fifteen inch and.
Well, it looks like the digit size is fifteen inch.
It looked like they're both fifteen inch.
Yeah, he was talking about one.
And the heights are both thirty-three point one inches.
The one that he likes is the, of course, it's the most expensive one, but um, the one that he likes is the one that's um, thirty, thirty-three ninety-nine. Um, and he likes this because you can program other messages on the screen. So say we put it on prospect and we use it as a speed sign, we could move it to someplace and say, you know, road closed, or um, he wants to be able to move it, and that one you can program any kind of message. The other one just says slow down, and it just says slow down.
I didn't realize this to be portable, so we'll go.
He wants to make it portable.
But can he?
Yeah, you can, you can, he talked about how he was going to attach it, and you know, Mike, he's got, I mean, he's so inventive. The the idea first is is to put it on prospect, because that's really where we have a a rough time with speeding.
But why do we need to have a flashing sign that says road closed, we got signs that say road closed, just put those up.
Well, it wouldn't, maybe it wouldn't say road closed, maybe it would say danger, maybe it would say whatever, I don't know, racing progress, or maybe, I I'm, but at least it gives you options.
How about this, did you not see the no truck sign on the hill?
Can you read?
See, Amy, you could have so much fun with these messages.
If you give me access to the programming, then maybe I'll consider it, but.
Um, keep in mind that this, this can be paid for out of uh, winter recovery money.
Access six hundred dollar difference.
Yeah, but this is paid for out of a different source of money, this is either out of.
This is getting reimbursed through
They told me.
Part of CHIPS funding.
Yes, it's a part of CHIPS, yeah.
Okay.
And we do have, we do have some money in that fund.
Yeah, we haven't used it in a few years.
Yeah. Now, uh, you'll notice that there's a note pickup in La Salle. This is, this are located in Montreal, but the shipping was so expensive, I said, well, maybe we could go get it. And he's, and so he called them, and so he he did get the price if we pick it up there. We would have to figure out how to deal with customs to bring it back, but I'm sure we can figure that out.
I'll find out what it costs to bring it back. I do, I've dragged access to, cut some broker.
Okay. Yeah, could you do that, please? His recommendation is the, is the one, though, that's the uh, the one that's three thousand three hundred ninety-nine. Um, I don't know if the board feels strongly that you'd rather have the less expensive one, but it is coming out of a
Reversible.
Though, it's reimbursable.
Make a motion to approve the three three ninety-nine.
I'll second that, 'cause I was gonna do.
Programmable, programmable speed sign with access to the programming to all trustees.
I I still want to talk about, okay.
I don't know, I'm getting a little nervous here.
It would be fun, you have no idea.
Yeah, I do have a little idea, that's why I'm a little nervous.
I think it'd be even more fun to put a camera on that thing.
Oh, the first year, the first year, the software that comes with it, and we don't have to continue this if we don't want to, but the first year that the software that comes with it does track the speed of the traffic that's going um, up and down the road, and other things that it can track.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. Um, Amy, so insane that, insane that price, that's, that's pickup in La Salle.
Yes.
So if, if we decide not to do that, if it's expensive to bring across, then we'd have to just say plus shipping, I guess.
Right.
Deliver it is thirty-six thirty-two. I don't know if you wanna add that to your motion, just in case we have to have it for looking. Does that cause you great pain?
It does.
Can you see it?
To remember, this is all reimbursable.
It's reimbursable.
No, but still, okay. Um, make a motion to spend up to three thousand six hundred thirty if we cannot get it across the border, smuggled in the trunk of a car.
She did not say that, strike that. Strike that.
We told Mike to put it in the truck. I cross every week, they don't ever ask questions.
Just kidding. Tommy, you're still stuck with the second.
Just kidding.
Yes, I still stuck with the motion.
Any other discussions?
Minus the comment.
It will come legitimately across the border. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's light, don't put it on your back.
Do you need to roll call?
Backpack.
Oh, yes, it's money, I should do, oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Ma'am McPatrick.
Aye, all right, great, thank you. Okay, we're along.
See, even when he's not here, he's making us spend money.
I'm the one that's been pushing this and pushing this. I, that, that street is just too dangerous.
I, the trucks is a big beef with me, with me, it's like, I meet so many
Oh, I know.
that leave addicts down there and cut across, or they cut, simply make a turn from the border and cut across. It's a shortcut, drives me nuts.
Uh, correspondence?
Um, correspondence from ARC thanking the DPW crew, JCEO monthly report, letter to Neil Coombe from Codes Officer Tetra, and correspondence from DEC for the wastewater treatment um, plant grant for the um, disinfectant.
Yes. And I will acknowledge that and accept that tomorrow. Uh, new business, resolution of election date, polling place and time. This has to be read.
Yeah.
Resolution of change to date of elections and polling place and time, twenty twenty elections Village of Champlain. Where, whereas pursuant to election law fifteen dash one zero four parentheses one parentheses A, general village elections are held on the third Tuesday of March, and whereas pursuant to election law fifteen dash one zero four parentheses one parentheses B, for those villages with March elections, if the third Tuesday in March falls on the seventeenth day of March.
Oh, really?
The Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain must adopt a resolution providing that the election will be held on Wednesday, the eighteenth of March. Therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Champlain elections for twenty twenty will be held on Wednesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty, and whereas pursuant to election law fifteen dash one zero four parentheses three parentheses B, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain must, at least sixty days prior to a village election, designate the polling place and hours. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined the polling place shall be at the Village of Champlain office, one 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 zero four Route nine, Champlain, New York, with the polls being open from twelve noon until nine PM. And be it further resolved that notice of said polling place and times be given at least sixty days prior to said election date. This resolution shall take effect immediately. A motion to accept.
So.
And seconded by?
Second.
The foregoing question was duly put to a roll call vote.
Trustee Trombley, Kim, she's absent, trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Whoops. Trustee Trombley.
Aye. Strike close up.
I think you're allowed to do them in the order that it was printed in, that's right.
Well, that's what I'm doing, and I'm going, wait a minute, that's not.
That's fine.
Right, she's really keeping us on our toes.
What's March seventeenth?
Saint Patrick's Day.
Saint Patrick's Day. It's in the election, county election.
Can't have election on Saint Patrick's Day.
If you have elections on Saint Patrick's Day, you may have some.
Just like if it falls on Friday during Lent, you can still eat your corned beef, it's just ridiculous.
On regular, yeah.
Really?
I'm serious, yes.
Wow.
It's an important day. Too, boy.
I'm Irish, I didn't even know that. Okay, local law, one dash twenty twenty, streets and sidewalks, notification of defect. Uh, we have the public here.